Hello guys, damn my hair doesn't look that nice. It's this part, I think I should cut this hair a bit. Okay, uh let's leave this thing and I will. So first I will start with my introduction. So I am Amr Nainan Awat and currently I am living in Pune alone. Pursuing my job in IT and the thing I am starting this life is for personal growth and to focus on studies in general. I thought maybe going live would help me to focus on studies a bit as a lot of people would be watching me. And if you guys want to suggest me anything then go for it. Pitch me out or comment down below and tell me what I can do differently. By the way, today's date is September 9th is when I'm starting this. What I have to, what my goal is, I want to complete the Strivers A2Z DSA course and I want to finish half of it till the end of this month. And in the meantime, we can dance on songs, maybe some Punjabi songs, Karanajla or anything if you guys want to suggest me, then just go for it. Makes me a little bit uncomfortable watching myself see a little flipped. But no issues. It's more about how my hair makes me look but no issues by the way this is my room and two guys live in hall. Like it this life would help me and what what do I say? In upgrading my communication skills and I also want to learn how to be vulnerable in life and be open about how I feel. And how slow I can talk, how reliable I can sound while talking. So my goal would be that. So for now, let's start working on myself. My goal is to complete the Strivers A2Z course and land a really good job. So I will start with selection sorting. Okay, the thing is I have already done selection sorting previously but it's been a little bit long time so I will try to code it up right now. So selection sort. So this would be the function name and it would take an array and it would it would just take an array named ARR and I will just do a console log here and call the my function and pass the array. And I have to establish an array that I want to sort. So would be twenty thirty one four three five is what I'm to sort. So this array would be passed to my function and what do I do in selection sort? Selection sort, I basically select. Uh I basically pick uh one of one of the element and traverse the whole array and select the smallest number and swap that number with the selected number. I don't know if I'm making sense but it makes sense in my head. So I will start coding it up. So first what I will do is I will add and for no for I equals to zero, I plus to zero, I should be smaller than ARR dot length. Okay, ARR dot length minus one and I should be plus plus. Great, then the outer loop will help me select one of my element and then I will run an inner loop which would be let J equals to J equals to. It should be I plus one, I plus one as it should be I plus one and J should be smaller than ARR dot length minus one and J should be plus plus. Okay. Now, what I have to do, I have to first establish a variable named small which would track small which would track my smallest number and for initial time I would give smallest number as my first element of from the outer element which would be ARR of this. Okay. Then then I have in the inner loop I will compare if my outer loop which is okay if my small is smaller, my small is greater than ARR of J then ARR of A then I have to swap it. So let temp is equals to ARR ARR of I and ARR of I is equals to ARR of. Okay, the thing is I have to traverse the whole array. Whole array and after that I have to perform it. Correct? That's the thing. Okay, first I if my small is I won't be swap swapping this. First I will initially do this, what I do is will upgrade, update my small. If my small is greater than ARR of J then my new small would be ARR of J. I don't know. And in the and when this inner loop is finished, I will swipe it. Let temp equals to ARR of I and ARR of I is equals to small and yeah. Small. Okay, I should store the index of it, I guess. This would be I and this will be B. Again, then ARR of I. Temp equals to this, ARR of I equals to spawn this, then ARR of small and then then ARR of small is to temp. This, this is my swapping logic swap. Okay. I think it is done. Okay, first I will go here, I will put this, stay with this. I'll compare it and update my small. Smaller I come out of that as well and my counter will increase. Okay, I think it's the same thing. Let me run it. I keep forgetting the command. That's undefined because I am not returning anything to what I have to return is my new array. It's twenty three, one, four, three, five. Okay, I fucked it up. Twenty point three. Oh my God. It's twenty three, it basically returns the same array. Nice. Why does it to write that I start? It's twenty. It's like small. Then one is smaller than this. Wait, smaller. Started. What is my small? Small is twenty, ARR of small is twenty. It will help, wait. Why the fuck is this small? So it should be not small, it should be ARR of. Okay, let me re-run it. One, three, four, two. Okay, it's still fucks it up and how does it's smaller, not smaller than equal to. So I have this and it should work fine. Nice. I will just cross verify it. I will give it to chat GPT and check if this is correct. Well, I used it. Now let's create. I will rename it add to bubble sort, bubble dot JS. Function bubble, it would be an array and my array would like similar to what it was priorly. And so bubble array. Not return the bubble spinning, right? So console bubble, bubble array, array is getting inside. So now bubble, bubble is also one of the oldest sorting techniques like the selection sort, both of them are of big O of N square. It takes big O of N square because there are two loops and inside it. So this is more for understanding how sorting works rather than actually performing it in companies. So for bubble sort, I'm thinking of it as a bubble but compared to selection sort where I usually pick one, 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 one smallest element. In bubble sort, I try to pick one of the largest element and do adjacent swapping until it reaches the end of an array. So basically I would be comparing uh I with J and if I is greater than J, I would swap them and then increase the counter, increase the counter again and if it is, I would increase the counter and in the end I would for the first iteration, I would get one of the largest element. I could get one of the largest element and the most right right hand side of an array. Then I will decrease the length of that and array and I can perform the same thing. Okay, while explaining, I think it is better for me to also focus on how I'm trying to communicate my solution. So let's go for it. So initially what I will do is I will as okay, I have to perform an adjustments pattern. This with this or if it is greater, I would swap and I will increase, swap, I would increase, swap. Okay, it will keep going on. But I think for bubble sort, it will only take the one array. Can I perform it? Just one array. I should be able to if I'm not assuming wrongly assume incorrectly assuming how bubble sort works. Let's see how bubble sort works. So the code is defined privately for bubble sort. Okay. No issue. See, I can perform bubble sort with while loop. Let's try to visualize how can I perform bubbles for two two for loops. Choose since the same. I mean, not. How it's gonna take me four, four, not four, it's gonna take me two minutes. Thirteen, forty six, kind of four, fifty two, twenty nine. So how it's gonna work? I would put this, J would put this, I would be comparing if not I will increment I here and J here compare and then I will swap. For term, then I will increment I here, J here, if not, I would compare. Okay, I here, J here, not compare and swap, then I here, J here, compare and swap. Okay, this could only give me to the most largest element in the array. That could be in a sorted panel but okay, so for this, my outer loop will work as the length, length of where I have to run it and my inner loop would be comparing and swapping. Okay, there is a small dip in my energy. A small, a little bit smaller dip in my energy. So I think I will take a small break and then restart again. Alexa, start a seven minute timer.
Seven minutes, starting now.
So guys, talk about something. I don't know if anyone is there. I can share my screen. Wow, nice. I would definitely do that. Sit down. Current viewing, concurrent viewing is zero, chat rate is zero, viewers are zero. I don't give a fuck. Looks a little bit weird. Just thinking about myself, how I'm looking like, that's how I guess adulting is. It looks a bit weird. I don't know how. Okay, I will just give some context to you guys. So currently I am twenty four year old and living away from my parents, living away from my parents, from my house, from my friends. Uh like for God's sake, I I really have a good friend here. As my roommate, he was with me in college and he's also currently with me when I'm doing job in Pune. So we have been roommates since fourth year of my engineering and I guess it's been three years, we are living together. Uh like it feels like the home is a bit safe space for me uh compared to how the outsiders and I believe and I believe I am bit lonely uh thinking about how things should be, thinking that I am like lacking behind uh other peoples. Uh like it does feel good when you see your friends grow, grow in life, uh living their best life currently but it also feels sad. It's not about sadness, it's more about uh inner view of yourself that you see and you try to compare uh yourself with them. It's what brings a bit sadness in myself but I believe it should rather than bringing sadness in my life, it should bring happiness or it should bring an excitement. Excitement is a correct word. Excitement in me that if they can achieve it, then I can also. Uh I want to reset how I start to think. Yeah, I guess it's not ninth today, it's seventh, seventh September. I have marked the wrong day. But that's how it is. I want to upgrade myself. I want to get a better job. I want to uh explore places. I don't want to get restricted from the money uh in my bank account. I want to be free. I want to live my best life. I want to explore things, have fun. I want to grow as uh I want to grow in my career. Uh that I want to make memories with my school friends as they might like after a while they will get married and stuff. So it's, it would be pretty hard to contact them. So I want to make memories for the timing. I want to be a bit childish. I want to do other stuffs. At this time, I don't know, I'm just speaking. I'm not thinking about it. I think I should think and then start to speak about it. It would make more sense to you guys. I don't know man, like when you start getting older, there are a lot of insecurities that get into your head. Like whether if it is female attention or it is your job or it is your fitness. A lot of things. Like you start to care about how other peoples see you. How they perceive you as a man or as a person. Uh, and you usually get judged a lot quicker than we think how it is. Like from the first. Interaction people starts judging you from the way that you dress, how you talk. Whether or not you are a clown. Hmm, there are a lot of things. Alexa, stop. I think. Uh, that starts, that slowly starts to affect you as a person. Uh, and it somehow diverse, diverts your focus from what you want to become. And you start chasing what others want. Uh, from you. So rather than focusing on my own goals and I try to focus on what others are thinking about me, how they want me to be. I'm not saying that it's a completely bad thing because most of the time, a lot of my friends who want only good things from me. But. It's I who try to. Overpower their thoughts or compared to what I think about myself. That's the time then, uh, when it starts to. Like worsen the situations. I also want to upgrade how I speak in English. I have seen, I have like. I usually don't use a lot of common words. I try to, I try to think of it, but when I don't find it, I try to use some. Similar meaning words, but it doesn't sound that professional when I try to speak. It's not to show anyone that I'm good at English, it's just for myself. And at the same time, this is thing that I have started. Initially what I was to do when I tried to upgrade myself or to. Elevate my looks or fitness or how I study. It's more of to show someone else or to prove someone else or to get back into their life by proving that you were wrong. But I think it's not helping me, uh, that's not the right thing to do. But. Uh, that's why I'm trying to shift my focus from trying to be. Uh, perceived as good by others. Uh, I want to be good for myself. A person who when I look back into my. Photos or videos or anything that I create. I feel proud of that myself is what I want to be, like it's what I want to become. That's why I have, uh, like. I have put on a wallpaper in my phone, uh, which says. Uh, this, I don't know if you are able to see this. Yeah, focus on improving. Focus on improving and not proving. So I'm trying to live by this motto. Uh, it's not something that I've been doing for a long time. It's been an hour that I have put on this wallpaper. And I will try to keep up, uh, with what I've thought. And keep you guys updated. So I think it's been a good break, I will start my. Study session again. Okay. So first of all. Let I put speaker. By the way, a tip for you when you start coding is to. Uh, explain it yourself on a. Uh, with a pen and paper, it might help you understand how the code actually works. Rather than just you assuming things in your head. Because when you like just think about it and you tell yourself that yeah. It makes sense. But and when you, when it times, when it gets time. When you have to showcase that thing, you usually tend to forget about it. So it's better to write it down and understand it completely, think if you are able to put it on your on. Uh, with a pen or paper or not, and if you are not able to put down your thought with a pen and paper. Then the thing is, uh, you didn't understand, understood that concept properly. Okay, let's see if I have understood or not, I have put it down on the paper. But let's see if I can put it or not. So first I equals to zero, I should be smaller than. Okay. So what it should, I will just R dot length is what I will say. I should plus plus. Then. Or. J equals to zero, J should go to. The zero, the J should be smaller than yeah. What I want is my outer loop to work backwards and my inner loop to work, work towards it. So that I can decrease, uh, the length of iteration. So rather than. Uh. It, uh, my I should establish like ARR of C, uh, uh. Zero, I will establish it as array dot. Then. That minus one. I should be. I should be, delta zero. And I minus minus is what I believe I want. And. My J should be smaller than I. And. My J should add. Correct, I believe this is correct, I should be my this. Length of it minus one, which would be not perfect index. And it should cha- start decreasing. Should go towards it. So, uh, the first thing that I do, will do is. I will establish. That. Large. Return. And then my J would be. Then I would compare if large would be something which is. Uh. J plus one. Okay. And I will compare if ARR of. J is greater. Than ARR of. Large. Then I will swap them. Let temp. Temp equals to. We are of. It should be the index of J. Oh wait, it is index. Okay, so this should be ARR of J. Okay, ARR of J should be my ARR of large. And my ARR of large should give down ten. Correct? If only if, otherwise I will just upgrade my J. And in the end of my output, I will return ARR. So let's see if I found it, uh, no, it sorted it perfectly actually. So let's see. Damn, I didn't expected it. I wish you have, you have written, that's a classic bubble sort with two loops. I don't know if I can add J if you want to do this. Now, I just want to check if this is. Correct. Bubble. Sort. And to return. Please. You push. After loop inner loop test, test, swap, outer loop. So it's time. We like to. Yes, show me an optimized version of bubble sort. Oh, okay. Okay, so what Chad Chipti just explained me is, uh, uh, that a little bit of optimization. So for selection sort, uh, wait, let me just verify and then I will start speaking about it. For selection sort or, or in. Complex fifteen for all. Is, is. Okay, so for all the cases, uh, in selection sort. Uh, best case, worst case, or average case, uh, the time complexity. Time. Fifty is big O of. N square, bracket all case. But for, uh, bubble sort, the worst case and the average case. Are big O of N square, but the best case can be big O of N. If I do this optimization, so now I will explain you how, what the optimization is. So the optimization is I put a counter, uh. Uh, at the start of a loop. And, uh, if there's a swap, if my control goes into the if block of swapping it. Uh, it will turn that counter flag to true. And from that I would know that there, uh, there was a swap that has happened. But. If that counter, uh, if that flag, uh, doesn't get flipped in the first, first iteration. That indicates that the whole array is already sorted. And from that I get the go off and I send my time complexity. We will take. Two loops. Outer loop. To. Track the. Length of next. Uh, we were. Uh. Turn. And. We do. So. Wapping. Okay. Why? I might ask, because in every. Iteration. We should, I. Don't. Uh, what? All. Array. As, as. In, in every. Iteration. Um. Ah, I'm thinking about taking a break. But shouldn't be, okay, uh, let me watch how sort works. It's so. So. Sorry. But. Learn. I think rather than watching this, I should directly watch this drivers. He want to take a break. Bye bye, bye bye, bye bye, bye bye, bye bye. Bye bye, it's like I just talked from here, bye bye. Bye bye.